The Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at six P. M. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Brings us to our agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Motion to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
A second motion?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. I have one announcement. Because of the uptick of COVID- nineteen cases in the community, I just request that all in chambers wear a mask. It's not a requirement. I see that that's happening anyway, so thank you all. Really appreciate it. Doing our part to ensure that we can continue having meetings face to face. There was an option that expired December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one for either one or several commissioners to attend virtually, but that is no longer an option, so I just want to do whatever we can to make sure we can all be here to make these important City of Marquette decisions. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. All right, we are moving on to our appointment and reappointment. So first, number one, we have an appointment of Nathan Williams. Do we have a motion on this appointment, Commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
I move that we appoint Nathan Williams to the Planning Commission under the terms listed on the agenda.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Hill, any discussion?
None at this time.
Commissioner Hanley?
No, I would just like to thank Nathan for taking the time to join one of our many commissions. There are many boards and committees that need people, and it's really exciting to have another person on the Planning Commission.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Item number two, we have a reappointment of Scott Crowe. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this reappointment? Pro Tem Mayor?
I move to reappoint Scott Crowe to the Marquette County Transit Authority for term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second, my Your Honor.
Any discussion, Pro Tem Mayor?
No, just thank you for continuing to serve.
And any discussion, Commissioner Stonehouse? Anyone else? All in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. If you'd like to have a public comment, please approach the podium.
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. And I guess I hold the distinction of offering the first public comment for the year two thousand and twenty-two, so it better be something memorable. I'm here tonight to ask each of the Commissioners to comment during the end of the meeting session on their goal for two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm asking that because one of the big items on the agenda is you're reviewing your rules and procedures for these meetings, and it caused me to think about how we've done the meetings and how they're going forward. But I also found myself at the end of last year, somebody said, what's the biggest thing that you got done? And I said, well, cigarette butts. And they said, did you plan that? And I went, no, I didn't. So I was kind of curious as to what your plans are. And it doesn't have to be a list a mile long. It could be one thing you're going to focus on, but I'd like to start the meeting with that. The one thing I'm going to focus on this year is being as productive as possible during my three minutes. I do have one request, and this is for the City Clerk's office. City Clerk? I have to hold this microphone up, otherwise I'm leaning over. Is there any way you could get a sort of a thing you could put on top here so it could rest a little bit higher? And I appreciate that's maybe a minor thing for all of you, but I'm trying to be more productive as I speak. So thank you for your time, and I hope we all have a great year.
Anyone else for a public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have one presentation this evening from Steve Laurie with the Board of Review. And Steve, if you wouldn't mind to come over to the side podium, we appreciate you joining us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. As Mayor said, I'm Steve Laurie. I'm Chair and currently one half of the city's Board of Review. We are, or I'm here tonight to make the annual presentation on last year's accomplishments of the board. As I indicated, there are only two people currently serving on the board. It's supposed to be a five-position board. It's been with just the two of us for almost two years now, I believe, and in my opinion, it's not giving the taxpayers of Marquette the due process that they're entitled to when we only have two opinions on their petitions. We really need to involve more people in that. One of the indicators, I think, is that three of our decisions were appealed to the board or stood at State Tax Tribunal, and the tribunal actually overturned all three of the Board of Review's decisions. So I really think that's an indicator of the need for additional input on the local level. Also, I'll go back to one. Mark Schneider, the other person serving on the board, his term is currently ending, and he is eligible for reappointment. I'm certainly hoping to reappoint him. I'm in my second term, so I won't be eligible for reappointment when mine ends, but I'll be around for the rest of this year, so. Showing up there is the purposes and goals of the Board of Review. It's basically established by both state law and the city's charter with parallel descriptions, and we meet basically three different times during the year. There's an organizational meeting the first week of March, and then the actual hearings are held the second week in March. That is when property owners can come before the board and petition change in their assessed value. There are also meetings in July and December, but those have other specific purposes, and they're not open to value appeals. They're more for the purpose of administrative changes in the tax law, tax rules. Your current assessing staff is Miles Anderson, the licensed city assessor, Amanda Winter, who does much of the residential appraisals as the city appraiser, and Christina Tisma, the assessing technician that assesses her. Again, the meetings, we held five separate meetings, three of them in March, and there are five again scheduled this year. That is one of the factors, I think, that limits people in applying to the board is the dates and even to some degree, the times of the meetings are regulated by state law, so there isn't a lot of flexibility to try to accommodate someone's work schedule or other personal schedules. The next two slides indicate the various types of appeals that can come to the Board of Review. As I indicated earlier, there is some appeal of our decisions to the State Tax Tribunal. There are properties, commercial classed properties, that can skip over the Board of Review and apply directly to the State Tax Tribunal for relief, and that's what you're seeing with the dark store issues and similar issues of that nature. Treasury and State Tax Commission are also part of the process, but they have very limited duties in what they can hear in the way of appeals. The taxable property in the City of Marquette, residential, well, the total value grew by fifteen million dollars over the two thousand and twenty value. It's currently at eight hundred twenty-four million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, forty-one. Most of that was twelve million increase in the residential taxable value, twenty-nine million in commercial, personal property increase, and twelve million in commercial real estate value increase over the previous year. So we are seeing growth, at least in value, but I think that's also part of your problem with affordable housing. So what's good on one hand has some negative effects on the other. This next slide shows the the SEV value. This is up five million from the previous year, but it also shows that there's basically a hundred and sixty-three million, six hundred forty-two thousand of untaxed value in the city, basically by Proposal A property limits. Properties are assessed on the taxable value. This shows the assessed value, and there's quite a bit of difference there, which also indicates some stability in the property ownership, too, because in order for it to really separate the two, the property has to stay in the same hands for a number of years. There are almost nine thousand tax parcels in the City of Marquette. This shows the breakdown in the various classifications. Those that are listed as reference parcels are really, they have to be kept on the books, but they're no longer functioning businesses or something. They were an account that was set up for personal property or for a business that's no longer actively in business, but it takes a while to, before you can take them off of the roll, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
Thank you. What is commercial, personal versus commercial, please?
The commercial, actual commercial is real property. It's the buildings and the land value that's in commercial enterprise. Commercial, personal property is the equipment and fixtures and other capital assets of that business that are not attached specifically to the property. So it's a, it's a business accounting type of decision, but it is a difference in the way residential and commercial is taxed, because commercial does pay on more than just the building and land value. It pays on what they've invested to improve that with items that can be moved to a different location. During, this shows that the number of petitions over the last several years has remained somewhat constant or even decreased a little. This shows the Board, or the March Board, when most of the petitions are brought to the board. And we only dealt with ninety-five last year, but that's when there's only two of us. That still presents a little problem in dealing with things. At least it was in person this year and not over Zoom, so that helped a lot. But those ninety-five is, that's somewhat of a misleading total, too, because of that total, only eighteen were actually requesting a reassessment of the value of their property. Fifty of those were veterans exemptions. We dealt with another twenty or so veterans exemptions in the other meetings, different seasons. A lot of, twenty-two of them were just approval of late filings of personal property statements. The assessor's office is not allowed to automatically accept filing of the personal property statements if it comes in after a specific date in the statute, but the Board of Review can grant a waiver of that date. We have to do it for each specific case. So it's more of an administrative issue, but it still has to come before the board. And there were three poverty exemption requests over the course of the last year. That allows those that have very limited resources to petition to have their entire or a portion of their property taxes waived for that year. They do have to apply each year for that, as do the veterans for their exemption, so that's an ongoing issue with them. We have a number of tax capture districts in the city that, where the taxes go to a dedicated function or dedicated fund that requires it to be used just in that district. We have the former Cliff's Tower property, the county land bank covers a few properties, the customs house on Lake Shore and Barraga, the new hospital, DLP, Founder's Landing, four seventy-five, that's the former two thirty-one West Washington building, and Liberty Way. You're all familiar with that one. One of the newer ones is the U. P. State Bank on West Washington and Rublin, and we have the DDA district and the expansion of it to include North Third Street. There were several appeals to the State Tax Tribunal during two thousand and twenty-one. As I indicated, a few of these were cases that had come before the Board of Review, and we didn't feel that they made their case to us. They have, of course, a chance to find out where the weaknesses are in their case and add additional evidence before proceeding on to the State Tax Tribunal to make that case, so it's understandable where they could reach a different decision. There were a few of these that were settled with a negotiated reduction in the value between the assessing staff and the owners. Four of them were actually withdrawn before the tribunal made a decision on them, and one was dismissed for a change of ownership after the petition was originally filed. Even though the list looks a little long, it was not really detrimental to the city in most cases. I think there were only three negotiated reductions and two, three decided in the petitioner's favor, and those were the ones that had already been to the Board of Review, so they were minor residential ones. The board actually is somewhat of a court. It's meant to hear petitions and render a judgment on the evidence that's presented to us. We kind of act as the balance between the taxpayer and the assessor, someone to bring any complaint about the assessor's value to, and then the tribunal can overhear, or can hear any appeals of our decisions as well. So people do have a process to follow. It can be a little complicated. They do have to study the process in order to successfully make appeals, but it doesn't require a major expenditure on their part in most cases. A good appraisal, recent appraisal of the property is probably the most convincing piece of evidence, and that costs a little money, but it's not required, and there are other ways to prove your case on the value of the property. And basically, as I indicated, a lot of what we do is more or less an administrative approval of veterans exemptions and late filings and things like that. But we are there primarily to listen to people's evidence of a challenge to the actual value of their property, and that's what we kind of enjoy doing instead of just approving the administrative stuff. I think the competency of your staff is demonstrated by the fact that we've had very few appeals of value over the recent years. But I've also heard that because of basically the rate of inflation this year, we can maybe expect a much busier March, and therefore I'm hoping we can find some additional people to fill seats before those hearings. Any other questions?
Commissioners, any questions or comments for Steve? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Steve, for your service for, you know, many years to the city and this really detailed presentation. I just had a couple of questions. First of all, in your experience, you noted that you've got, I think you said of like fifty-some veterans exemptions and like only three poverty exemption applications. Is that typical, would you say, or is it atypical? And why do you think there are so few poverty exemption applications versus veterans exemption?
Well, the standard for poverty exemption is quite difficult to meet. It applies to all of the people residing on the property. The total combined income of all those there has to fall below an approved level. You adopt each year. Normally, you kind of tie it to the federal approval, the federal level. And then there is also a second criteria on assets, what they can own in the way of automobiles, recreational vehicles, any other property that they might own that all factors into that. And it's really a fairly low total on all those things that they have to fall below. So if they can meet that, they definitely deserve the poverty exemption. For most of the time that I've been on the board, we've typically only had one per year. Last year it grew to two, or the year before it grew to two, and this final year it was three, so we are seeing a few more. Veterans exemptions, we did fifty of them just in March, and then I think probably another two dozen or so during July and December, and those have to be filed annually. And that's an ever-increasing number, which even though those people, you know, for the most part, really deserve and need that relief, it certainly is, has an impact on the city's tax revenue. And I know the, you know, general position of the city has been like most other municipalities. If the state approved that benefit, they really should fund it. It is accumulating on the tax roll here, and you do feel the effects of it, so.
Thanks. That's really helpful information. And this might be more of a question for our city attorney, but please feel free to chime in as well if you have thoughts on it. You know, I think seeing the fact that, you know, we, it's honestly impressive to me that we only had three successful, you know, appeals or decisions made by the Board of Review, given that there are only two folks serving on the board handling, you know, over ninety, you know, nearly a hundred appeals. I am curious, you know, whether we feel that, you know, only having two members on the Board of Review when there ought to be five, does that make it, do you think, easier to argue to the tax tribunal? That your appeal ought to be, ought to be accepted, the decision ought to be overturned?
You know, I think that certainly does not work in favor of the city and the Board of Review. If we can find people to serve, that is going to be a much better situation for the city and the Board of Review than for the, you know, the petitioner or person objecting, because they're going to feel like they're getting a better panel, I guess is a better way to put it, you know, that's reviewing their case.
Sure, thank you. Well, I think it's critically important that we get a couple more people on this board in the next couple of months, as you said, before the March review period begins for two thousand and twenty-two. So I can think of one or two people, and, you know, hopefully, if maybe all of us can think of at least one person to reach out to and just say, hey, would you be interested, explain the job? Then hopefully, we can get at least, you know, one or two more people on there, so thank you.
Thank you, and I hope it wouldn't be the prime reason, but if there is a need to add some incentive to some, it is, I think, your only advisory board with the city, other than, you know, the commission and the elected Board of Light and Power, that does have compensation for the meetings. So it's only six hundred dollars a year, but we don't meet very often either, so. It was something, I guess, that surprised me after I got on there. I didn't realize that, but it may help some that want to serve on there as well, so thank you.
Steve, I think we have a couple more questions, sorry. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Thank you. I actually had a question.
I actually had a question on the taxable value by property class slide. Could we go back to that?
Sure.
In particular, it says commercial facilities new, and it says it's $92 million, almost 90, really, $93 million, and it's 11% of the total. What is what is that referring to? Do you know off the top of your head?
I guess I don't really feel competent to explain that one. That would be a question better posed to your assessor. The actual descriptions up here are something he pulls out of state tax law, and I believe it's related to the the tax capture districts, but I'm not entirely positive on that. So I think it's something to pursue with the assessor.
I was just gonna say, I can get you an answer on that.
Yeah, thank you. It's just that's a nice big number, and so I was wondering what that was. And are there, is there also a similar breakdown for new residential? It does seem like we got new homes built this year, and I wondered what the impact of that was, just in relation over year to year, how much we're we are gaining in residential, and if it's possible to get that number.
Sure.
So.
On taxable value, there was an increase from 2020 to 2021 of $12.4 million change in value there. That is not just new construction, that's the actual increase in value of older homes as well. I don't believe, well, they can probably dig through the records and sort through and find you a value of new construction, because it is added at the end of the year, but it's also construction that has been completed on December 31 of that year. Whether the building is habitable at that point or not, the portion that is constructed on that date is what goes on the tax roll.
And my final question, which really probably is again for the assessor, is given how few homes are now changing hands and this great reduction of supply that's causing part of the problem, will that then mean that our taxes, even though the values are going up, the taxes might not increase because taxes are the revenue that we receive only goes up when there's actually a sale?
Yeah, I think we're already seeing that. I think Steve touched on that point a slide or two back, that's that discrepancy between the SEV and the taxable value. So we're already kind of already feeling that effect, the effects of that.
Right, but I wonder if it was, yeah, I wonder if it was getting even worse with only having, you know, we're hearing about how there's less than 10 homes for sale total, and how is that going to impact our taxes going forward? It just seems like it's going to make it even harder. So it's a bunch of interesting, so the folks who are interested in these housing issues, this is a great commission to be a part of. You're going to learn a whole bunch, I think, probably about how things are going with our housing. So thank you very much, Steve, for your your service and the terrific presentation.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Thank you, Steve. I certainly think we got the memo loud and clear that we need to start beating the bushes for some other folks to serve on the board with you. Thank you for serving as long as you have, and hopefully, we'll find you some more folks soon. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, up next, we have item number four on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote due to item number 4E. Do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Hanley?
A motion that we accept, or that we accept the consent consent agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Pro tem mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion, Commissioner Hanley? Pro tem mayor? Any other commissioners? A quick roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor pro tem mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. And on to new business, item number five. We have the City Commission Rules of Procedure Number 2003-01. City clerk, could you please read the background? Do we have a background?
Yes.
Just, oh, we do have a background. I couldn't remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the commission adopts rules of procedure to help the commission run an efficient meeting and to deal with the public and the media in a positive manner. Two documents are attached. The first represents the proposed rules with suggested changes in red, while the second is a clean copy of the proposed rules. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, discuss the City Commission Rules of Procedure 2003-01 as amended, and approve the rules along with any changes the commission should determine. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I would move to accept the rules as proposed.
And do we have a second? Pro tem mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, only that the the rule changes are really procedural in nature based on the change of state policy.
And Commissioner, pro tem mayor, any discussion?
I would just agree with what Commissioner Stonehouse said.
Any additional discussion by the commission? Commissioner Hill?
I did have one question on the, sorry, can I get, close the file on me here. We, on the question of going, where'd it go? There was one thing we needed two-thirds instead of a majority. I apologize, I had it right in front of me, and then it closed. It had to do with going into.
Do you have a page number, Commissioner Hanley? Okay, that's her. I thought she might know.
Yeah.
We're all looking for it now.
Yeah, it's, sorry. Yeah, here it is. Suspension of the rules. For suspension of the rules, we need two-thirds instead of 50%. It's on, I'm sorry, page 10 of 11, or page 45 of 46, down at the very bottom. And I just, I frankly had forgotten that that, it looks like that's state law, and that's fine. I just wanted to highlight that because I, we've had that, we've done suspension of the rules a couple of times, and I was operating under the assumption that it was 50%, but, or 51%, but in fact, it's two-thirds. Right, so just, that's all I wanted to say. Everything else is, Commissioner Stonehouse said is just bringing it up with the current rules for, with the with the virus. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Commissioner Hanley?
Mine is just something very small from reading through these, but I did realize that when it comes to public comment, we only have to have them state their legal address once in front of you during a meeting instead of every time. I don't know if that's just something that we do automatically anyway, but it was something that, the only reason it came to mind was the meeting where we had about 50 public comments, and they all said it so many times, that they just have to say it once during any public, is what it said. So I didn't know if we would go with that, or if we would take that out of there for that, and or add that we wanted it every time.
Personally, I think it's fine as is. That was an oversight on my part, and I think it's also kind of tracked when there's that many, hard to track when there's that many people in the room. Rather safe than sorry on that one, but.
Should we change the writing of the rules to say that?
Which page number is that on?
It's page eight. Here at the top, addressing the commission.
Well, it doesn't preclude someone from doing it more than once. I think I can just modify how I say that. Anyone wants to make a change in the rules? Any other discussion? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just finding, getting back to my spot. I had one question. So on near, right at the very top of page three, under section D, minutes of regular and special meetings, the clerk shall, it says number three, the clerk shall also prepare a summary of the minutes showing the substance of each separate proceeding of the commission and shall indicate the vote of the commission members. The summary shall be published within 10 days of the meeting in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Marquette, and that's apparently a charter requirement. I'm just curious, number one, if we actually do that, and number two, what the process would be for not having to do that anymore if we're not doing it?
We do. We do do that. It's usually within, you know, four or five days, but that's published in the Mining Journal. It is literally just a list of the action taken by the commission. It includes commission members present, time the meeting was adjourned, and then any active votes that were taken. So it's not, there's no substantive discussion or anything like that included. It is a charter requirement. I have, I don't have it open in front of me. I have a gut feeling it is, that's pegged off of the Open Meetings Act. I don't know if there's necessarily a requirement for summary minutes in the Open Meetings Act, but we can look into that.
Well, yeah, thank you. I think if we're doing it, then we should certainly continue doing it in the interest of transparency, and, I mean, amending the charter is very complicated anyway, so thank you. I was just worried, concerned that if we weren't doing it, this might be one of those things that has kind of slipped through the cracks over the years, but I'm glad that we're doing it. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. This is to our second public comment session of the evening. Please state your name and physical address unless you've already done so. Anyone for public comment? All right, seeing no one for public comment, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start things off with Commissioner Davis.
All right, thank you. I didn't think I had anything to talk about tonight, but since Ms. Brum challenged us, I will just say that that there's a lot on our plate. And it was interesting when she said that the greatest thing that she felt she did last year was something that she didn't plan, and I think that might happen to us again this year. But my goal would be just to delve deep into the issues that come before us, study them hard, give them great consideration, and make the best decisions I possibly can.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I also would like to say on what Margaret had said, I am very aware that the decisions that I make as I serve here impact all the residents of our city, and I want to be able to stand behind every decision that I make and be able to back it up. I also, after this meeting, have decided that I think the biggest thing that I'll try to do this year is set out on a campaign specifically to fill the open seats on our boards and committees. It is very evident with the board of review, a very important board that we have, that we need seats of people on it, but there's also openings on almost every single commission and board that we have at this point, or committee and board. And I really think that we should work within our friend groups, within our community, putting out notices, trying to get people to fill those seats, because they are just as important as us up here. They help us to do our job better, and they help to make this area a better place to live. So I think that is what I would say my goal will be for this year.
Pro tem mayor?
All right, I'll, I guess I have two things. First was, I was just gonna say that I got my booster in between our last meeting and this one. I felt similar the way I did after the second shot, and that was a little rough for the day after, but I'm still glad I did it. I guess I will also try to answer Ms. Brum's challenge here. You know, there's just so many things that I think all of us want to try to accomplish within the next year or two, and I don't know how I could pick one, and I could easily pick something that I'm passionate about, but I feel like that's doing a disservice to a lot of residents that way. So I think what challenge I would be looking at is still trying to conduct myself and govern in a manner that is actually healthy and productive for our democracy, and I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I also want to thank the city crews that were out, starting at about 7:30 this morning, fixing the leaking fire hydrant at my block just above my house. It was a very cold day to be digging up the intersection of Albion and Craig Streets, and they were out there all day. They were there when I left to come to this meeting today. So thank you very much for the folks who are out there making sure that our infrastructure, if it's broken, is is getting repaired. It was, it's quite the day to have to do that work. And I actually have been, was thinking very much about what I wanted to accomplish this year, and so I had, in fact, resigned from the mayor pro tem role in order to focus on the master plan process that we have coming up this year, which we have not done for a number of years, and I'm very interested in engaging with that. And that is my goal and commitment for this year, and in all the other things that has been said that are going to be coming on our plate. And I also want to take up Commissioner Hanley's charge to help fill those committee seats. I think that is also that's something, you know, we've, with COVID, and, you know, we've all, but now it's definitely time to bring this all, bring that all back. So thank you very much for bringing that issue up.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I think on my part, it would not be correct to say there's one thing I want to do, because I think that makes a very poor commissioner, to be honest. We have a lot of stuff that we're doing, and a lot of stuff that could be pulled directly out of our strategic plan. Of those things that we've identified as a commission as being priorities we need to move forward on, and to do that as an imperative. We talked, for example, and I'm sure we will, is continue to keep the pedal down on economic development within the city, because that is our future. We need to do affordable housing. We need to keep that one on the burner. We need to continue to keep recycle and recycle programs on the burner. We need to be cognizant of COVID, and we certainly need to keep pushing on what we can do for climate change, and that's just the top of the pile. So when we look at what we have coming in the current year, we had need to remember that we have a full plate of critical agenda items, and I would be very hesitant to say one of them is more important than another, or one is one that I'm going to take care of, because we can only do what we do as a team, what we do as a commission of seven, working together in mutual respect and mutual goals. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to once again thank Mr. Lowery and everybody on the board of review, and all the people that volunteer for our boards and committees for the work that they've been doing for the city, and I really like Commissioner Hanley's response that, you know, she's going to try and really double down efforts to get people on all these boards and be happy to join you in that effort. I think we all, we all probably would. A couple of things before I answer Ms. Brum's question, which I think is a really good question. First, that if anybody gets their utility bills, there was apparently a misprint of the due date. Some of these utility bills may say that the bill is due on January 12, but they're actually all due on January 19, so just something to be aware of. And then also, yesterday was National Law Enforcement Day, or National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, coming from a law enforcement family. I think it's, you know, critically important that we thank the, you know, men and women who are doing a, one of the most difficult jobs that there is. So thank you, Chief Rebol, and everybody else with Marquette Police Department, and our other local law enforcement departments, like the Marquette County Sheriff's Department, where my dad worked for many years. And then in response to Ms. Brum's question, I think that there's, it's really hard to pick one thing. I think I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse that picking just one thing, one issue, probably wouldn't be responsible, but I think that there's probably three things that people in the city of Marquette expect from us. Number one, that, you know, they can trust us, they feel they can trust us. Number two, that we're just making sure that the basic services provided by the city are working and are sustainable. And number three, that we're tackling some of these bigger-ticket, longer-term issues that people are talking about around their kitchen table, like housing affordability, preserving our public lake shore. Those are probably two of the big things that come to mind that people mention to me over and over. So I think if we focus on those three things, trying to be transparent, trustworthy, and accountable, making sure that the snow is getting plowed, garbage and recyclables are getting picked up, the roads are being maintained in a, you know, consistent and fiscally responsible way, and if we're really acting now to take action on some of these, these long-term issues that are going to require, you know, creative approaches and a lot of collaboration, like housing, you know, preserving our lake shore for future generations. I think that if we can do those three things, then we'll be doing a really good, good job on this commission.
So happy So, happy 2022. It's the first meeting of the new year. Glad to be back at it here in a new year. One thing I wanted to note is that I will be serving on the NMU Presidential Search Committee, representing both the city commission and the greater Marquette community as a member of the community and an elected official in the community. So I welcome any and all input as we begin that process. We have a very first meeting on that next Monday, and there'll be several meetings. But it sounds like this group is made up of about 22 folks, many of which at NMU, different groups at NMU, some community members. And it's our task to come up with, narrow down a pool of about three to five candidates. And I believe from there, the trustees will choose, interview and choose who they'd like to see. So that's my understanding of my role there. Ms. Brum, I love the question. Thank you. I think a goal that I would like to state, I would like to work on is increasing revenue to balance the budget, because so much of everything that was said already hinges on us making sure that we can pay for the things that are the most critical issues, or that we have capacity in staff, which also costs money to work on the critical issues. So I see that as something that we need to solve this year, or at least begin the process in solving that. So I think that's one of the best things I can put my energy towards this year, among with everything else that's been listed. So, appreciate the question. Thank you. That's all I have. Do we have any comments from our assistant city manager, Sean Hobbins?
Yeah, just two things real quick. First, I just wanted to recognize and say thanks to our public work staff, who are out there keeping our streets and sidewalks clear. It's been a couple of weeks since our last meeting, and we've had a couple, you know, snow events since then. I think everything looks really great out there. So, doing a great job. And then, for my second thing, I'm gonna pass the mic over to Chief Rebol.
Thank you, Sean, Your Honor. I just wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge the upcoming retirement of Captain Mike Lorala. His last working day will be this Friday. He'll be on the books a little bit longer than that, but he served over 26 years with the Marquette Police Department. He's been a huge ally over the last six years as chief, and has been a great resource. And I wish him nothing but happiness, he and his family. And we look forward to celebrating this week with him as he gets ready to retire. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned at 6:48 PM. Thanks, everyone.